Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock and I'll call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Hello, everybody. Thanks for being here. Let's, oh, everybody's here except for Aaron and he told us that he was gonna be gone. So next item is agenda review. I will entertain a motion on the agenda.
And move to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Okay, Debbie?
Tom?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Josh?
Yep.
Derek?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. All right, our first discussion item tonight is the policy first read for three, well, we're calling it item three A one, G B E C Drug Free Workplace. Anybody wanna lead with comments about this proposed policy change?
Well, I've got quite a few, but I didn't know Dan, if he was gonna lead us off, like what you had, what we had hit you up with first?
Well, I can say that some of the common questions were, most of this policy is just a reorganization of how it was arranged and that came through from, uh, we did check with OSBA and they had rearranged the order of the policy. We're bringing this forward to you because we wanted to add a section on employee drug testing under reasonable suspicion and that is in the case if we establish reasonable suspicion and feel that there's a need to do that. So that's kind of where this policy is coming from. And the reorganization is just based on OSBA's sampling, which, but from that point, I've, I will do my best to answer questions.
So for me, I have two, well, actually, let's just start with the first one, prescription medications under definitions. My, my policy where I'm at is you have to be sober. I don't care if it's you got a prescription medication of Xanax or lorazepam. Or if it's alcohol or any drug you may take, even though marijuana is legal, it's not legal if it's inhibiting you, just like you're driving the car. That's my office policy. The thing that is interesting here, it says in the workplace. So I'll leave that to me later. So prescription medications, abuse of Adderall, Ambien, all these things could take place. Are we saying that that's under the definition of controlled substances?
Believe most of those things would be under considered controlled substances.
Okay. So then my next question would be, as far as reporting of say, somebody gets a DUI outside the, their work duties, say the night before, or say during the summer. Is there a reporting duty from said employee to report that to us? Because I know in my line of work, every time I get relicensed, we have to have a mandatory, like since your last, have you been convicted misdemeanor and or felonies in our disclosures? When it's in between their license periods though, when it's, do they have to report that to us?
The same thing. Well, that goes to T S P C.
I don't.
So I think the question that you asked, a similar question that Derek asked me, which is the, if you go down on this policy, it says within thirty calendar days of learning of a employee's criminal drug statute conviction. So I think the question that has been raised is what happens, you know, if there's been an arrest, but not in a conviction or been a citation?
What if they don't disclose it? It happens, but they don't decide to disclose it.
Well, I think they could be held accountable for that, for not disclosing that if there's a conviction.
Yeah, you have to let your employer know. When when you re-up your license or if you interview for another job, there's all sorts of things you need to.
Yeah. So for instance, on a DUI, you would, that would be something you'd have to self-report on an application. And I would think that in most cases, an employee would report that, you know, an incident has, has occurred.
Okay. I had a similar question, just on the notification part, specific to like the arrest or the violation. Um, for a couple of reasons, you could, you know, the conviction could be six, twelve months down the road. And so, uh, let's say there was an employee that had citation or arrest for either drug, alcohol, uh, related, that might be something where EAP services might be able to intervene. And if it was for a driving related, and since that might be a concern that we might have if they're transporting children. So I think my question, is there any, is there any, um, what would be the like triggering factor? Like, can we actually enforce that? And so that was the question I had, not necessarily the conviction, but just the notification that, hey, this happened, let my employer know. Okay, great. We'll monitor or, you know, take appropriate action.
So my response to Derek earlier, uh, which I, I will look and see if we have the ability to require a, a notice for that. Uh, can we require an employee to give us notice if they've been, you know, arrested, but maybe not convicted? Uh, my guess is the language in here around a conviction, you know, is based on statute. Uh, but I can look into that and see, can we require that upon an arrest? Obviously, if someone is arrested and unable to come to work, that's a different matter. Um, and we would probably treat that accordingly if they're unable to report to work because they're, um, detained at the moment.
I guess using Josh's example of having to report for licensing is the question on your li- annual licensing. Is it, have you been arrested for the, for an offense or have you been convicted?
It's, it's have you been convicted of a misdemeanor and, and or felony?
So if you've only been arrested for those, you don't have to report. So why should the employee have to report? Is that kind of where?
Yes, and interesting, yeah.
Okay, just trying to.
I think conviction should be fine. I think I'm fine with conviction, not of an incident, because you're not taking into the consideration of the event.
Although we do want to know, I mean, I think I understand it's, we should know, but you, but you also, the person has rights, so, so there are so rights. On how that plays out.
My only other concern, but we have it in here is now in healthcare, every individual insurance company has different rules on reporting. Ours says ten days. I think that's fine. Like if, for instance, I, uh, did something dumb. Uh, one of the insurance companies says I have seven days to report. Others are within thirty days. So we said, we have ten here, so sure, we're fine. So, because I don't want to mess with our risk assessment with our insurance policy, so. And we only have one insurance company, the insurance district for this type of stuff, right? Okay, pace is that? Yes. Okay.
Then the, uh, I'll just mention, the other question I had was about the reasonable suspicion, uh, the policy and have a specific guidance, but you're able to provide, uh, the board, I think everybody got a copy, just what the steps look like. Yes. Um, so that was helpful to get that piece.
So yes, you did all receive a copy of our internal form that we use whenever we have a reasonable suspicion. And there's multiple form. There's multiple people signing off on that process. So there'd be at least two people that have been trained in reasonable suspicion that go through that checklist.
Anything else? All right. Well, that is our first read. Um, good questions, everybody. Good discussion. And, um, our next item is the financial audit and Steve is going to introduce our, um, special guest, the auditor that, um, is gonna help answer questions. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Daniel, if you could promote Kenny for us. So, uh, tonight we have, uh, a presentation of our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, audited financial statement and, um, Kenny Allen, one of the partners from our audit firm, Polly Rogers, uh, and our lead auditor will, uh, do a presentation to touch on, uh, the compliance and, uh, just give an overall summary, touch on some of the new, uh, GASB's or governmental accounting standards uh, that we had to implement and the ones coming up in the future. And he'll also be able to answer some questions and then, uh, we'll let him go and then I'll, uh, present a little bit more and answer some more questions. Just the, the goal is the turn of the guard bond discussion by about seven twenty-five or so. So, uh, Kenny is on the screen and, uh, hi Kenny, thank you for being here this evening. We have, uh, this is a board work session, so that's why we're set up in a square.
All right.
Have, uh, Kenny's a long time auditor and partner at Polly Rogers and I think he's zooming in from Beaverton area and, uh, yeah, thank you for being here, uh, tonight at the, the stage is yours.
Hey, can everybody hear me? Can I be heard? Am I, uh, can you hear me now?
I mean, we can hear, I can hear you a little tiny bit, but it's very, very faint.
All right, sorry. Somehow the internet went down just a few minutes ago. Perfect timing, of course. So if you could hear me now, let me know.
Dan is popping out here. Let's see what he's got to say.
Can you hear me?
Daniel's working on here, Ken. So I did, uh, while he's working on that, Kenny, um, so I brought hard copies, uh, of the audit report for you all. Obviously, we, uh, shared it on board book about a week and a half ago. And, um, if you would like to keep the audit, the paper audit, uh, it's, it's all yours. If you'd like to, uh, uh, if you don't want it, then if you could just give it back to myself or to Debbie and we'll have some extra copies in the office for some others. All right, let's give it a shot.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Great, perfect. All right. Thank you for having me. I'll go over the board letter, which kind of summarizes the audit process. The purpose of the audit is designed to determine fair presentation with generally accepted accounting principles, audit standards, Oregon municipal audit laws, as well as the federal single audit act. On the overall financials, the, uh, on page one of the large financial report is our audit opinion. That's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that you could receive in an audit. Second, we also have our Oregon minimum standards audit where we look at things such as budget, debt, collateral insurance, state school fund and other items. We found one exception requiring comment, which was an over expenditure noted in the, uh, in the audit report. Next, we also have what we call the single audit opinions. This is when you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money. We have to go through and look at a few programs or usually it's one program, but because of the the COVID monies, there's a lot of high risk monies that we have to look at. So this year we actually looked at three programs, which is unusual. But we had no, uh, question costs or compliance issues that we noted in that report. One thing I'd also like to bring your attention to is this year, there was another very large, uh, accounting standard that was new this year. It was called Government Accounting Standards Board number ninety-six. This is where you have to go in and you have to put a, a liability value on all your subscription based I, IT agreements. So it was quite the, uh, lengthy process. I'm sure Steve could probably fill you in more about how long it took, but it's pretty significant for a lot of my clients. It could take one to two weeks of staff time to do this and implement this. Also, there was a similar standard last year, which was where you had to put a lease value or liability value on your leases. So you had two standards, back to back years where it could take anywhere from forty to two hundred hours of staff time to implement these standards based on the size of the district and how much of these types of lease and IT agreements you have. So staff should be commended for going through this process. I'm not sure there's much value in the information, but it's something that it was required to do by the, uh, standard setters. Staff should be commended for going through that process. Next, uh, there's a few best practice comments in the bottom of the board letter. I'll kind of just summarize them. Basically, um, we're required by accounting standards to, uh, if there's any fund that's in the negative, we had to put that in the I report. There really isn't any appropriated funds with any negative balances, but within your special revenue funds, you have many, many, many different, uh, funds, like sub funds in there. And a few of those had negative, excuse me, negative balances. So we just want to bring that to the board's attention. And I know Steve knows a lot about those and he could share more about that. Um, next, one thing that I've been talking to most of my school districts about is, um, due to all these new standards, like the ones I just talked about, as well as new grant regulations, whether it's the SIA monies or the new COVID monies, there's been a lot of extra work put on fight on the accounting and finance departments over the last few years. So I just always recommend that an assessment of the FTE levels are done annually. Just to make sure that your accounting staff isn't overburdened. I'm not there on a day to base basis, so I don't know. But I know a lot of my school districts kind of have gone pretty light over the last few years and haven't added much staff, even though there's been a lot of extra workload in the accounting department. So that's something that should be looked at. On top of that, it's also, there's some issues with also finding accountants and in this day and age right now, it's not a profession that a lot of people go into. So it's definitely even hard to find people in that. So it's something to always look at and look at during your risk assessment process that you do. Next, I just basically like to thank the staff for their hard work and getting me the information they need, that we needed, as well as implementing all these new standards and doing the work that they need to do to get the audit done on time and to O D E by the end of the year. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Question at will, members.
Well, I have quite a bit, but I don't know if they, for him or for Steve.
Just asking, maybe both of them in China.
Where to start? How are other districts doing with their general fund? As far as, I know Salem's not in great shape. Uh, we're definitely in a more favorable position than Salem Kaiser schools, but we have a fun board policy of right here, ten percent of our general fund and we're down to one point five. I know a lot of districts across the state are struggling with the lack of state funding. I guess I'm asking, where are they at? Where do we rank compared to other districts with the general fund reserve balance?
Man, I can't speak to everything. It says I don't audit everybody in the state and, but it's, your fund balance is a little lower than most that I see because I had, I personally audit about twelve to fifteen school districts. So you're on the low side of, uh, your fund balances, would I definitely say? I know Steve wants to add any information there.
Yeah, I, uh, is gonna cover, we, like we talked about in November, but in the management discussion analysis, I have some comments and then about that, we'll jump back to that.
No, I apologize. I, this stuff's over, over my head when it comes to the budget stuff. So I've, please, if I offend anybody, I do not mean to. I'm just not very smart when it comes to this. I have questions on, why have our capital assets decreased? I know that it's a lot of vehicles, buildings, land. I did not expect our assets to depreciate by so much due to the investment we have with the amount of properties. I'm just kind of curious, is because of the vehicles that are taking such a large chunk of that? And, which is number four.
Roman numeral four.
Roman four. I'm trying to understand like it decreased by about two, two point two million dollars.
Yeah, that's about. Really didn't, I would say we really didn't add any new assets and there's depreciation.
This is depreciation.
Yeah, there's about two point two million dollars of depreciation this year. Page twenty-six of the audit, so that's the main reason for the decrease.
Now, right, the next page over, Roman number five is the revenue, like how we make money, our charges for service. We actually have a decreases in our charges for service between last year to this one. And I'm curious why we're charging less with inflation. So like, I'm thinking like a business or a restaurant. I feel like we should be charging more for our services. So the one thing I can make sense is we actually have less service to charge for. I mean, I don't know what goes in charges for service. I, I mean, what are we selling? I don't know what that category is. Can you speak to that, Kenny? The charges for services line item?
I'm kinda compared to last, I, this year's up and running. So charges for services are mostly, you know, a lot of it is, you know, food service and a lot, and some of it is related to uh, student body funds, but the reason for the decrease, I'd have to, you know, look in and research.
Yeah, this isn't the way we, we categorizing it through the year. This is not a, not a type of a the way that presents the net, net position, but we, we have revenue broken down in different ways throughout the audit reports and talking about that too.
How big a concern, like there was the one fund that overspend? Audit wise, how important is that? I mean, obviously if we're gonna, we're gonna ask Steve how this happened. How big a concern should that be for us from the audit standpoint? Well, it's something that you, uh, I mean, you need to, uh, ask staff about, you know, why it happened and why it occurred. And then you're gonna have to write a letter to the state regarding why it happened and why it won't happen again. Those are the basic, that's what audits have to look at. And we also have to look at the reasons for that. I think Steve could probably talk more of the reasons for that.
Sure.
What are you referencing, Phil?
Uh, the one.
Special revenue?
One revenue stream that was, it was overspend. We went red.
Yeah.
And I couldn't tell you where it is right now. And I saw what I think.
It's on page eighteen of the large data report.
Yeah, that's in my comments as well.
Okay. You know.
So another one that's interesting to me is all these leases are, um, leases we have on this technology. I'm looking here and it's listed as governmental activities. This is on like page fifty-seven in the document and lists all of our yearly subscriptions that we pay for. Is this, does the government kick in on this or does this come from our general fund? Cause I just find it curious, like obviously schools need Microsoft to run all their word programs. Or is this something that the government is expecting us that we just pay all these subscriptions? Like I've got Renaissance securely. I mean, we just go through, I'm sure a lot of this stuff is necessary for a district to operate. But is this, where does this come from to pay for this?
Uh, either the general fund or a grant fund and special revenue funds.
So the state does, does not kick, like they don't have a certain list of programs that they're willing to kick in for us to operate for a public school. Like they're not gonna pay for a Microsoft account. Even though we basically have to have.
Paid for from our state school funds or.
Okay.
We just have to disclose all the different subscriptions we have and what the liability is so that it's part of our government wide financial statement and reflected in our statement of net position. Uh, Kenny, uh, the statement of net position in the beginning on the government wide statements, um, is, is it true to say that most districts are negative there because of the purse liability that, uh, local governments hold?
Yeah, I don't think I've seen many districts all that have a positive net position. Most of it is due to the, the net pension liability that you're required to put on your books for the statewide purs. And I think I, I don't know exactly what yours is, I can figure that out. I think it's about thirteen million dollars, fourteen million dollars of that, of your fund balances is decreased by the net pension liability of purs.
I do like the subscriptions. I, I, I just want to say it helps with transparency.
Yeah.
And now these are all, you know, built into a, uh, well, another subscription. It's a program called Debt Book. We started using them last year for the leases and now all the subscriptions are loaded in there. So there, it's almost like a fixed asset schedule, so to speak. So any, any new one we, we, we get during the course of the fiscal year gets loaded in and then the ones that we have that are on the books for three to five years, they just get updated, kind of like, uh, you know, like a loan or, you know, like fixed asset schedules with depreciation, so to speak. So it, it reflects our total commitment. Some of the expenses for the year were a total commitment on those, on those leases and subscriptions through the life of those, so.
But I'm, I am curious, like, we have an interest rate for our subscriptions? Like it says through like a.
Well, we do, we do for leases, but the interest rate for subscriptions, I guess I'll let Kenny explain that one.
What's the difference?
Well, basically what you have to do is you have, there's no, none of these subscription based IT agreements have any interest in the contracts that I know of. But what the standard setters say is since it is theoretically like a long-term liability, you have to impute an interest rate for these things. So it kind of, it's just kind of accounting thing, whether or not the, it's considered interest or principal on this subscription based IT agreement. It's kind of, kind of just a, an accounting thing more than anything, I would say.
So on a, probably half of the subscriptions on page, uh, fifty-seven or fifty-eight are related to technology and we do plan on having Brett Milliken come in, uh, even either March or April for a technology department update and he could, as part of his report, go through what all of these are. Um, uh, you know, FMX is our maintenance, uh, program for putting in the work requests around the district that the facilities department handles. Uh, you know, I know Leslie's talked about Renaissance and I know Scott and I don't know more about that, but, um, you know, PBIS, Positive Behavior Supports. So some, some of them are self-explanatory and some of them you just look at and say, what, what is that for? So we'll definitely get some more information for you. This is again, the first year, it's, uh, we've had it in the audit, so it's nice to have a consolidated place.
So is Ed X a subscription?
It's not a subscription based information technology subscription, no. It's a contracted service.
Cause I didn't see anything of that in here.
No. Those are, those are expenses related to a contract for services, personal services, um, that's spent out of this student investment account, which is in special revenue.
And I guess I got one last question. I'll be done. So I'm going through the general fund budgets and like the special revenue and I'm looking at what our estimated final budget to what the actual is. And I want to know like how we got so far off on some of them, like, like, um, the food services, we did not, we were below a hundred and forty thousand dollars of what we expected. The, I'm looking at the numbers, like some of them are just like, I, when we're set, when we were setting the budget, I'm just kind of curious where those numbers come from. And how could they be so vastly different? Like six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar difference from not getting federal government? Were we expecting it? Was that COVID money we thought we were gonna get?
Yeah. You're talking, you're back on the general fund.
Yeah, that's the general fund.
So I, I've got comments on them as well.
Okay.
Does, I can have any more questions for Kenny and then I can get into some of these, these items too.
Looks like we're in person.
Yeah.
All right. Hey, thanks for joining us tonight, Kenny.
Thank you.
I really appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for the, for the questions. I do have some comments on those specific questions. And then, um, so I, I did have a a few things to just take you through first. Um, Kenny pretty much mentioned the compliance, uh, and the GASB, the new GASB requirements. Uh, where I like to start on mine is the, the last two pages. So, um, I know some of you were looking at paper copies, others might be on electronic. So, uh, so on, on pages seventy-six and seventy-seven of the paper audit. And, um, and PDF, PDF will be a different page, just page, pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine PDF. So this is kind of where you see the, the, the summary. I think it's in the letter. He sums it up very well. But when you're looking at the report, this is a nice summary to look at. It's specifically the, the, the findings with regards to the federal, the federal audit specifically. And you can see the, the three programs that were tested at the bottom, the ESER, uh, special ed, uh, federal special education grant known as IDEA. And also the National School Lunch Program, which is another federal, federally funded, uh, grant. So again, that's where you see the, the unmodified opinion and all of the other, um, categories that they test as far as, you know, if, if any material weaknesses were identified and those types of things, which, which never know. Um, and then if you go back to the front, uh, when you get to the, the area with the Roman numerals after page three, so Roman numeral one, which is PDF page nine. So PDF page nine through fifteen, this is called the, the management discussion and analysis. The management discussion and analysis, and this is a a narrative that that I write up. Um, this required in the audit, the school district must write up. And I Josh already, uh. Hit on, uh, a few questions from. The statement of net position, uh, and the revenues there, which is summarized in a completely different way. But I'll turn your attention to PDF page or to Roman numeral page seven on PDF page fifteen. So this this last page here is is kinda my narrative, which really. Kinda matches a lot of what we've talked about, you know, earlier this year and over the last couple of years in terms of. Kinda where things have. Gone the last four years and why, um, this is a, I think, a. Kinda sums it up in three paragraphs, so, um, I, you know, I won't read the whole thing aloud, but this this speaks to. Kind of our economic condition. You know, uh, reasons for. You know, the decrease in the fund balance and, uh, what we must, uh. You know, start to do, and it doesn't doesn't specifically have an action plan, but it sums up kind of the the past, so. So there's that, there's that part there. And then, um, just just to kinda take you through just a, just a real high level tour of the the rest of the statement, you know, we we are up to seventy seven pages now, the. The leases and the subscriptions added probably ten or twelve pages to the audit report. The PDF I think is ninety nine pages, but, uh, basically pages six through fourteen, PDF pages nineteen through twenty nine, there's are specifically the. Fund financial statements. And then the big section in the report. Is a forty five page section, pages fifteen through sixty. Uh, which, uh, is PDF thirty through seventy five. Is. All of the. The real detailed information about our, uh, accounting policies. Uh, pages twenty seven through forty four really gets, uh, some. Very specific detail about purse pension liability and other post employment benefits. Uh, page pages forty four through forty six. PDF pages fifty nine through sixty one summarize the district's debt. So our general obligation bonds or pension li- pension liability bonds as well as our. Full faith and credit loan, so page forty five, you can see the under district borrowings. First one dated June first, two thousand fifteen is that. Full faith and credit loan. That was taken with Columbia Bank in two thousand fifteen, now Unquabank. To repurpose the Slater campus. You can see we have a outstanding balance at six thirty twenty three of just under one point two million dollars. That expires in July twenty twenty eight. That's a. Kind of a. Something I wanted to to highlight in light of tonight's discussion. And then the the one at the bottom is a, uh, a lease, uh, we we took through Keybank. Uh, for the Senate Bill eleven forty nine to fund that district energy efficient lighting project here back in two thousand nineteen, so that's, that's what that is, the. The bond payables is the.
So Steve, that one, was that what they were talking about this report where they're, that's a mandate from the state, but they're not helping us fund it?
No, it wasn't a mandate, so Senate Bill eleven forty nine dollars are for energy eff- efficient projects and the program started. Back in two thousand one, two thousand two. And every district gets money, uh, from utility companies, uh, each month, we get about eighty four thousand dollars per year. And, uh. You know, most districts have been receiving those funds for twenty plus years now and done various projects. Um, and this was a case where we had money saved up, but we also borrowed against some future Senate Bill eleven forty nine dollars to get the project done now. And, uh, have. Safer lighting, but also more energy efficient and start saving on utility. So that's what that is. Uh, and then of course, we talked plenty about it already, but leases are on pages forty seven through fifty and, uh, it's. Subscriptions and pages fifty one through fifty nine. And then on page sixty is where, uh, the comments, uh, so PDF page seventy five deficit fund balance. The special revenue fund ha- any fund balance of eighty eight thousand one hundred deficit any fund balance of eighty eight thousand one hundred fifty four dollars as of June thirty of twenty twenty three. Um, if you then turn to page, uh. Sixty four and sixty four A, when you get back to, uh. The page sixty three, pages sixty three through sixty eight will take you specifically through. Actual versus budget on each of our funds, general funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, internal service funds, capital project funds. So I'm just gonna jump to special revenue funds really quick to address. The negative eighty eight thousand dollar balance, so. This this fund, special revenue funds, the two hundred funds. As as Kenny mentioned, there are many sub funds. There are a at least a handful of federal grants, uh. More, uh, five to ten different state grants, and then there's also local grants and our agency funds or like. Agency or student body funds from each school, so there's literally twenty or thirty different programs going on here. So our federal programs are Title One, Title Two, Title One A, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four. The special ed, uh, grant IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act. The NSLP, the National School Lunch Program. And also, um, we used to track Medicaid in here and now we've moved that over to the general fund, cause it's more of a reimbursing program. And we're never quite sure what we're gonna get back, um, and when. Um, and then we have state grants, so our, you know, in what's its third year now, student investment account. High school success, which is about five years and. Uh, CTE career pathways, preschool promise, reengagement opportunity grant, outdoor school funding. Our PKA or PE grants. Uh, and other smaller miscellaneous grants. And then, as I mentioned, all of our agency funds for the schools that were in this, they're all within special revenue. So. With your question with regard to budgeting. This is the most difficult fund to budget for because. Well, for example, um. One, one thing you see at the bottom of page sixty four is that we are over expended in instruction and support services. While our SIA grant ended up being over three hundred thousand dollars more than budgeted for twenty two, twenty three, which is great. But a procedural error that I that I, uh, made was I did not, I should have come back, you know, when we found that out, um. It came with what's called an unanticipated resolution or fund, unanticipated funds resolution to, uh. You know, to to accept the additional revenue and then appropriate the additional expenditures. It doesn't require a supplemental budget, it wasn't over ten percent, but that's a procedure that was not. So. So that didn't happen, and in terms of the budgeting, it's it's very difficult because. Many, so the federal fiscal year is from ten one through nine thirty and the state fiscal year is from seven one through six thirty. So. Right now, we're still finalizing, uh, some paperwork. Just to be able to access our title one eight, but we've been spending it for three or four months. Most grants you spend first. And then you. Get the money in arrears. The same thing is happening with some of the state grant funds, uh, in fact, we weren't even able to access our SA SIA funds, even though we have. Three or four months worth of expenditures until just recently when Leslie got the grant, we didn't even get the grant agreements until December. Um, fortunately, now we're able to to request up to seventy five percent of the funds, which which helped us with that, but. Because it was a legislative year, they, you know. And also the enrollment is changing so much because that's tied with, just like state school fund. It's just a guess when we're, when we're budgeting in in March or April, um, we're just taking a guess as to what the funding might be. You know, SIA, which is a three plus million dollar. Uh, grant, uh, also in the federal, we don't even know our title allocations until the fall after the school year started. So we tend to budget higher, but in this case, SIA, we budgeted too low, and the same thing's happening this year. We're actually receiving more than we expected for SIA this year, which again is is it's great and I'll have to kind of.
Not resolution.
Right, this year, so so that's, you know, that's that's kinda what happened there and then, you know, food services, you never know. You know, we were coming out of the pandemic, you tend to. You know, to 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 budget budget high both on the revenue and expense side. And, uh. So that speaks to the other part. Of of the issue in special revenue, not just the appropriation piece, but also the ending fund balance, so. Um, the 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 problem with, uh. The two areas that we had a problem with are food service, so we have, um. Currently in food services, which is fund two ninety nine, a balance of negative two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. And we didn't have enough money appropriated in our transfers because the general fund always has to, uh, supplement. The food service fund by at least a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we did have a couple of years during the pandemic due to the way, you know, when they were serving free meals for all. Um, where we actually. Didn't lose money, but that is not the norm in Silver Falls due to where we have a much lower free and easy use. Uh, percentage than a lot of, uh, a lot of districts around us, and it just doesn't pencil out to, um. You know, to to break even without some help from the the general.
But like in food service, where does the three hundred figure come from that was used for budgeting?
Are you talking about the?
The special revenue.
Special revenue.
The food ser- food, food, food services revenue, that that's an estimate.
Missed it by fifty percent.
That that that's an estimate of local revenue and we just don't know what the participation rates will be and also what. Uh, all the reimbursement rates will be both from the state and the federal government because it's been changing, it's changed three or four times just in the last three years.
Have the the rate tab from the government?
Reimbursement rates, program laws have changed every year through the pandemic, so. Yeah, that one's really hard to.
Cause that's just.
So I wanna say something, Steve, and I know I'm taking this all the talking too much, but the report says you do fantastic work. I do not want you to like. My questions come across like, I don't know how much I absolutely appreciate you. Um, I would imagine doing audits or like going through my underwear or both and somebody doesn't find.
Yeah, my 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 conclusion have more to do with.
Where do we go?
Where?
Yes.
Fixing why the budget's about, not not the procedures, you know, I mean, yeah, there's a little whoops on not getting that. The one revenue bit over there, but, uh, just budget wise, you know, like what, three areas there under special revenues that. Didn't even, nothing changed from them, so one wonders why they were put there to begin with, services provided, textbook sales.
Yeah, well, that, you know, those categories are in the two seventy fund, which is for the the state agency funds, which, you know, the the biggest volume is, of course, at the high school, we have literally. I mean, we have hundreds of agency accounts, uh, across the schools and so that's just a categorical, uh. Thing, um. You know, that that maybe they're not all coded to, uh. To those specifics, I guess we just didn't use those specific source codes. I think most of the the two seventy. Ac- activity came into, uh. To the extracurricular activities, so there's, there's a few different codes they would use at the schools to record the money coming in. And and the bottom line with special revenue is it's it's really, again, it's, uh. There's, there's, in fact, there's, there's another grant, there's a grant we received that also should have gone on and anticipated, it was the reengagement opportunity act, for example, that wasn't budgeted in here anywhere. Anywhere, but we, of course, receive the money and incorporated in special revenue. But the bottom line is you wanna make sure you have enough appropriation to handle all the activity. In all these funds, so with two seventy with the student activity, those fell off the map during COVID because no one was here. And then they came back and activity started to ramp up again, so when you budget for this, you just, you tend to budget the the revenue high. Because really the. The the money comes in on the two seventy, it comes in and it goes out. They also have, I mean, there's about five hundred thousand dollars in balance. Between all the schools and their agency funds, positive, but and so. You know. We have no idea what kind of activities you're gonna take place, you know, throughout the schools. You just wanna make sure you've got it built in your budget and that's just all part. Of the same fund as all these other grant funds, so so there's a lot going on in here. Um, if we were to turn back to the general fund, back on pages sixty three and sixty three A, Josh was asking the question about federal revenue. You could see, first of all, the bottom line is. Actual revenue was forty two million, forty nine million, three hundred thousand dollars on a budget of forty eight million, nine hundred thousand dollars, so we only missed the budget by point eight percent. Uh, now, federal revenue is typically not involved with the general fund. The only reason that it has been the last few years is because. Uh, of the ESSR dollars, which we tracked in the general fund because of. There was no way of knowing exactly how all that was gonna be spent when the money came, so it was easier to track it in the general fund than the special revenue fund. So there was ESSR dollars and there was also the two FEMA claims that we pursued, which is federal, federal money. There's also E rate reimbursements and now we track all of our Medicaid over in the general fund because that also had. The three hundred thousand dollar negative balance in the special revenue fund because we accrued revenue during the pandemic. That, uh. Reimbursement rates were not the same for students that were learning virtually or not reimbursed at all as they were in person and so. Uh, we didn't know what the final outcomes would be on that until much later in the game, so we reversed that accrued revenue. And now we're just tracking all the Medicaid in the general fund, so a lot of this federal revenue, uh, is really, uh. Probably about seventy five percent of that's gonna go away, so the reason the federal revenue was a little off is just because there's a lot of timing difference with. How the HESR money is spent. And when it's received, again, it's in arrears and also the FEMA, it's taken us three years for ice storm FEMA and COVID FEMA. To get our money and we accrued some revenue along the way, but the feds changed the reimbursement rates along the way, seventy percent, eighty percent, ninety percent. The rules literally changed every few months, so. So that again was just more placeholder type type stuff. Um, fortunately, we were above budget in the state school fund because our enrollment recovery was quite a bit higher than expected. Um, so. Yeah, I guess hopefully I answered some of the questions.
I mean, I've got more, but I'm.
Um, I was gonna say at the outset, I would be happy to schedule individual appointments with anyone who would like to. Spend some more time taking deeper dives on the numbers, I'd be happy to, happy to explain.
Derek, you have a question?
I think more of just a comment, um. You know, with the one point five percent kind of cushion that we have, um. You know, action steps for moving forward, I think is prudent and. What do we? Taking a hard look and seeing where we can. Yeah. Potentially cut some costs and show that's weighing heavy on everybody's mind, but.
Yes, my my, uh, objective will be to come to the February board meeting with, uh, updated twenty three, twenty four, uh, statements. And some projections and then at the March board meeting, I'm gonna come with a a two page model map of. I, you know, things I think we need to do.
Obviously, it's not a quick fit, so it'll be, you know, over time, but, um.
Anybody else before Josh takes another go? Alright, go ahead, Josh.
So. I mean, I'm just looking at support services, you know, eight hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm assuming a lot of this is because of. The new contracts. Uh, payroll increases. Do we budget, knowing that every three, four years, we're gonna have COLA? Increases for both classified and certified staff? Like, what is our estimated?
Yeah, we do. We budget for COLA, didn't really budget much for staff because most of the retired employees were replaced by younger. Teachers, that was something we talked about in November, that the average teacher cost has increased higher than what we budgeted. Uh, just because some of the replacement, more of the replacement teachers are now. On the higher end, um, but. Yeah, so we, you know, obviously we've had four contract settlements. In the last four years, two for each, uh, uh, union, uh, the. Uh, the first one with the teachers was two months before the pandemic and then we lost ten percent of our income. Our SIR funds were funded at one third per student of our neighbors because of the way they decided to to doll about that money at the state based on poverty. Uh, we were, we were in some pretty unique dis- disadvantages there, so. In terms of the support services in the general fund, we were three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars over budget on transportation. We just moved back with first student last year after coming off a five year contract with Durham and coming out of the pandemic. They could only service twenty three routes because we had no drivers. And we went to first student and asked him for for thirty eight routes and we needed forty three. So, um, we didn't know exactly what we need to service the kids and even having to pay out of town drivers. So again, that was some guesswork there, you know, so that's three hundred and twenty five thousand. We spent a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars on our bond effort in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, I had only budgeted fifty thousand. Um, some of that money was spent in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, some of it was, the majority of it was spent in twenty two, twenty three. I can tell you that the bond effort for May, uh, will be probably ten percent or less of that cost. We're not doing three. Surveys, which cost three surveys, a total of seventy five thousand dollars, fifty of that was paid in twenty two, twenty three, twenty five. Thousand was paid in twenty three, twenty four.
Sorry, I said ten percent of the.
Well. My estimate is ten percent of last, we were, we paid, we paid, uh, Winnebago to help us go through the BAC process, we're not doing a BAC process again this time.
Was that of the one seventy five that we actually spent or the fifty that was originally?
All of the Winnebago was spent, uh, last year, um, some of the right public affairs was spent last year and some this year. And then the surveys, two out of three were paid last year, one this year. Uh, one thing that I missed in the budget was it does cost thirty thousand dollars to, uh, for Marion County and Clocklamas County to run the elections for us, so we'll be incurring that. So we'll be incurring that expense again in the same fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four.
But were you asking if your ten percent estimate was from the, the budgeted amount or the actual?
Oh, uh, I, I just, I, I estimate we'll spend ten percent or less of our total. Uh, outflow that we spent to get through a BAC process, take surveys. And get assistance from, from our right public fair, I, I estimate this bond effort will cost ten percent or less.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
So we're not using right public affairs, we didn't need to go through BAC again. And, uh, we, we're, we're paying a little per hour cost to, to Winahaw right now and to, uh. A little bit to Jonah, Jameson, the architect, and then first we'll have some outreach of our own that will push out from, from Derek and we have to pay the counties.
Some of these things Steve, that you talked about, uh. Some are, there's varying degrees of necessity on, on some go over. I guess the problem I have is where, how, maybe it's a better question for management, Scott. And Dan, but how do we get to where we're basically spending what we don't have? Uh, I mean, some of these items you commented were budgeted, say fifty thousand, we spent a hundred and seventy-five, uh. That seems. Not imagine real response on. Uh, on the surface, you look at, and I guess, I guess what I'm grasping for is an explanation somewhere from somebody. Uh, how that ends up happening. Because it kind of. It, it kind of throws budgets out the window if you do that very much, I think. I mean, we put the, a budget gets put together in the spring and we're gonna say we're gonna spend three hundred thousand on X. And then we spend five hundred thousand on X. We're two hundred thousand in the hole or that two hundred thousand has to come off a whole bunch of other things. Uh, that's a concern.
I, I understand what you're saying, uh, obviously we went through five years of work to get the volume to the ballot and we didn't know exactly. The method by which, or all the steps that were necessarily involved or the tools that we might need to, 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 to give it our best chance to pass. Uh, I would also say that we went till mid-April, even though we were paying our teachers last year. So, you know, it's, uh. You know, we budgeted, we budgeted over a year beforehand, so.
E- even then, uh, you know, I. Uh, our employees probably never get enough, but then again, where's our responsibility to? When we are negotiating or doing funds like that, that whatever we've got, we've got, we don't go over one. You can't spend what you don't have.
No, I can't answer all this, but we were on the brink of strike twice, so.
That also seem, that also seems to me like a kind of a fundamental misunderstanding of, or a difference of understanding, I'll put that way of what a budget is and how it works. Um, you know, I think about myself and building a house, if I've got five hundred dollars budgeted for nails. And they cost seven hundred dollars because there's been a price, an anticipated price increase, I don't say, well, I can't build the house. Um, you know, and. Conversely, there's going to be areas where I receive more revenue or it didn't cost as much, I can take from, from those areas, so to me, it's more of a. You know, it's not so much of just saying, well, I've got this much money for each category and if it costs different than that, they've got to stay within those, those categories.
Oh, you, you're, I, 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 I hear you one hundred percent on that, I'm just, I'm just saying, but you've got to use your analogy. But then you look elsewhere, can I afford this, can I do it? And, you know, you're pulling it from somewhere else.
Sure, when you're gonna make a discretionary decision, you gotta decide if you can, if you can afford it.
Yeah.
So you can divert or.
Cause money can be moved around for a lot of these categories, uh, with no, no problems, and I understand that, know that.
So Steve, can you, um, remind us of when we do have to do a supplemental budget, like? Um, in that case, like when we had fifty budgeted, but we spent more than that, there was no need to come back to the board. Although I will note that the board unanimously supported spending, um. Uh, by our expert or to, to, to contract with our expert, experts. Um, so I, I would say there was board support, not for specific numbers, but. For making sure that we were giving our best effort for the last fund, um, effort. So, but yeah, can you explain how the supplemental?
Supplemental budget is required if, if, uh, if the fund is affected, um, by, I think it's over ten percent.
Okay.
And, and the appropriation levels by, by fund and then by major, major function. So you may be over, over or under in specific sub-functions, right? And you manage, you manage with that.
Got it, and I do get your point too, Owen, about having a plan and it does, it never goes exactly.
Right, for all the million reasons, yeah.
That's right, but we, a- and we are going to be, we're, we're, we have a plan to get our ending fund balance.
So, Madam Chair, I guess that's my question is to you is, what do we do now? Like you say, there's my, I don't know about a plan, I haven't heard of one.
Oh, yeah, they, they've come to us, um, well, the, at the last budget committee meeting that we had, this is before you came on.
Okay.
Um, that idea was introduced to us that we have got to get on a more sustainable track. For our ending fund balance and then, um, was it November, December?
I was just gonna say, so in November, the last time we sat in this configuration, we talked about. Uh, steps we're taking to trying to tighten this year's, uh, tighten our belt this year, so for instance, we've had. Two teacher resignations that we have not filled, we've had multiple classified, uh, postings that are openings where we're trying to. Fill from within to eventually get to a place where maybe there's a position that we don't have to replace and so. It's essentially like a hiring freeze middle of the school year to, um, to not fill, I mean, we've. Our high school's been down in associate principal, assistant principal, this, for majority of this school year that we've not filled. Um, so, I mean, in all areas from administration to license to classified, we've essentially been in a hiring freeze.
And on the flip side, we're, the average teacher cost is higher than what we budgeted, so that's, that's something going the wrong direction, uh, for sure. But there's been a lot of, a lot of action taken throughout the year, just in terms of management since the start of the school year, but like I said, I, I will, uh. You know, I'll, I'll come with a, with a list of things that, that, like I said in November, we're gonna need to cut. Our net expended, you know, net expenditures, we have to say, you know, employee costs are going up by X due to calls and steps. And then, uh, and if we need to save two to three million dollars, that's net of those increases, so. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five to eight percent of expenditures and also knowing the next year will be the fifty-one percent state school fund.
Yeah, Steve, I, I guess I would just, I, I, um, I appreciate Phil's, you know, questioning and kind of where this is, you know. Things are going down, but, but I would, I would say that I, I appreciate this because none of this is a surprise, you've been telling us that. That the fund has been going down, you know, this, this is not a surprise and as a. On my farm and in my business, my budgets are completely out of, I'm trying to predict anything right now, it's been very difficult. Um, and I've been very surprised about things and, you know, the most part, these have not been surprise and we've been, we've known here for a while that. Then even balance is not going to end where we wanted it to and we need to re-double our efforts next year to kind of just turn, turn the ship and. Bend, bend the curve, so.
Actually.
And then Steve started just to follow up, a percentage of that would have been the, the contracts that came recently and then the reduction that we had in student population would account for.
I did, we made the decision in January twenty-twenty to agree to the SFPA contract, I knew that would immediately take fifty, forty, forty percent of our. Thirteen percent ending fund balance and then the pandemic hit two months later.
I, I think that's worth noting, like that was a pointed conscious decision to make sure, yeah.
Black swan, they call it.
And it was, it was also a market correction for our, our employees, so I think that, um. You know, right now we're, we're at our limit in terms of that, but, um, it was something that. Needed, well, I, I think the consensus was it needed to happen because we want to be competitive in, in the employee market.
So Madam Chair, I guess my last question is, I, is there anything for us as a board to do? Is there a work for us to be done by us or do we just wait for, um, Steve and? And that team to report to us with a plan or do?
For the next budget, um, cycle, yeah. I mean, is there a better answer around the table?
No, and I think the, the plan that we'll lay out for the board, I think, Steve, somewhere around two thousand twenty-seven is when we'd expect. To get back to a healthy balance. School finance has never been so complicated as it is now. We were hit with so many different things, let alone a global pandemic, but also the amount of revenue streams that have increased is incredible. When you couple that with these, these ba- basically daily changes by O D E. And how they, uh, release their funding and, and, um, really throws us a curve ball. As Steve said, we just got access to, to some of our funding sources along that. So it makes it incredibly difficult to budget for these types of things.
Yeah, I would just add to that, I think that Kenny's comment about, uh. Business departments and not short-staffing your business departments with all that is being required of something. You know, because it's easy to say, well, we need to look at the district office or whatnot and certainly we're going to examine. You know, administration, but I, I don't think that our business department can take any of the absorption of any of this. Because there is too much work and not enough, uh, uh. You know, people like he was talking about in these positions, and if you compare us to the rest of the state. In terms of who's got their audit done and who's, let's put it this way, we are not on the warning you won't get paid list. Because our audit is done and complete and with excellent, you know, reports of how, how we. Uh, conduct our business department, so I think those are just things to reemphasize about supporting our business department and their work.
Yeah.
So I, I also wanted to just thank Steve and his staff too for, um, shouldering the complexity because. I am in awe every time you sit down and talk to us about how all this works, there's a lot of stuff to keep in mind. Um, I really appreciate that and you got pet off a little bit, did you have anything more to say about?
You know, not really, Dan took the words out of my mouth and it's, and I don't know how to. Express the frustration of that comment from Kenny in the back, it's like you need to make sure you have enough people. In your accounting department to take care of all the regulations, but that money comes from hiring teachers.
Yep.
But we gotta take care of the regulations.
Yeah.
And so what are we doing here? Are we, are we a teaching institution or are we a regulation taking care of institution?
Both.
Well, we're shifting from one to the other.
Um, last thing I was gonna say, I meant to mention, um, I'm sorry, uh, page seventy-one in the paper is our. It's a very interesting page if I get it, it's our schedule of federal awards, so this really sums up the. All the federal awards we get, but, uh, the grand total at the bottom was, was not correct, so I put a fresh. Sifa, as they call it, in the back of your, of your booklet there. And then the last thing is, I did not print this, this is a separate supplement that is required to O D E. Which is also the basis by which we send the electronic data, the database initiative, that's a whole separate process. Uh. It's too small to read, print it out, but it was on your board, board book.
Right.
And it's much easier to look at on, on PDF, so I did not print it, but this, this gives you, uh. By every fund, uh, the revenue by source and then the expenditures by function and object. So it's a very, very good detailed breakdown, um, of things, so this is just another thing to look at. And since Kenny started off the presentation, I did, uh, well, I, I did want to say that, um. Dan mentioned about the due date, so there were probably fifteen school districts in the state that, that, that didn't get theirs in and missed two or three state school fund payments last year, that's just ours, so. It's due by a hundred and eighty days from the end of the fiscal year, so this year it was due January third, so. Ours was submitted towards the end of December, the paper audit, which can now be done in PDF instead of delivered by hand to the public service building. The electronic version, those two have been reconciled and, uh, approved by O D E. And then it's also sent to the federal clearinghouse electronically, that's been done and, uh, to all the other organizations, the counties and the V S D and all that that. Is required, so that's, that's all done. Last but not least, I wanted to thank, uh, Kim Dowd, Sharon Etzel, Luis Chavez and. Uh, Raissa, Dan Chav, and our business services department, because it's a total team effort to get all this done, so.
Thank you, sounds like. Yes, tell, yes. And I would, yeah, Steve, anytime I've interacted with senior team in action, they're just top notch. I would add also that how, how extremely difficult it is to find. Really talented staff in finance right now, let alone school fund. We just hired our payroll specialist after we've tried, we've been trying for, for a long, long time to get. Uh, really quality person and we won't stop until we have found the right person and, and, um. We've had a couple of individuals that were not successful in that position and now Steve has finally built his team towards fully staffed. So it's just another little thing to keep in mind that makes a huge difference, so you really are working around the clock.
Uh, Steve, a question for you, uh, is it in, is it feasible or? For like once a month or something to have some current, or is it even a number that can come up very easily? As far as where expenditures are compared to where we are in the year, you follow what I'm saying? You know, are we thirty-three percent through the year, but we're twenty percent through the budget or fifty percent through the budget sort of thing?
Yes, and I've not been as consistent with the reports with the bond effort in, you know, that's something.
Oh, okay.
I will have something for you as big.
Oh, yeah.
You know, one more, one more quick question for Steve.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like there's almost fourteen million dollars of unfunded purrs that comes out of our budget. Is that thirteen point six or something like that?
What page are we getting on?
Oh, gosh, I just. I guess I was on page four. The thirteen point seven ninety proportionate share of net pension liability. Is that what that is?
Proportionate share of net pension liability. Yeah, proportionate share to all other.
So is that?
Anticipates in purge, yeah.
So is that what we pay out basically to fund people that are retired already?
That's our liability.
Or does that include our current?
Uh, that's a good question, I'll check on that.
I was just curious, because I think.
It does definitely include the retirees that were, that were part of, at least at some point in all of their careers in Silver Falls, or it could be. It could have been multiple first cover employers, but that, that's included there, but, but I would assume probably it's some sort of an estimate for current. People too, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Well, my question is really is, I know we have a huge, uh, assessment each year for folks that already retire. Uh, because the promises are made, retirees and the inability to, to meet those promises on the same level. Do you know, just going forward, is that gonna be something that? You know, school districts like ours are facing for thirty years or indefinitely, or is it something that eventually, um, is going to?
Um, well, I know that the changes they made going back to around the two thousand three legislative session. When Krulyn Goski was governor, maybe some sweeping changes made when we went to another round about four years later. And ultimately it's two thousand three where the opser, or they don't like it being called tier three, but it is. Uh, it was just created and also to, uh, update mortality tables and, uh. The guaranteed rate thing changed and they created the, the side account, all that, all the changes they made have. Pointed a path towards a little bit better balance and reducing liability, but still the number one driver. In terms of, of the health of the pension system is the investment performance, um, so. It is interesting though that I think Kim may correct me, I think we're already up to, it's hard to believe, about seventy percent of our current employees. Are actually observed now.
Yeah.
And not tier one or tier. But it's about sixty percent of the payroll is observed, but forty percent is tier one or tier two, just because one of the people that are tier one or tier, tier two are. Higher end of the pay scale, so, but it's, 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 it's changed and it continues to change. And then, uh, you know, it might take some more adjustments and you can get, get a good run on, on investment performance, uh, you never know, I think. Oregon made it, it is low as in the high seventies or low eighties, I know some other states were down to sixty, I think Illinois comes to mind. Uh, but I think Oregon's also been at ninety percent plus, so, um, but again, those investment swings could really have an impact. But I think the legislative changes they've made, um, and I know there's more than what I mentioned, um, have helped. And I know there's more than what I mentioned, um, have helped. And so it's hard to say if it'll ever balance out.
Yeah.
But, um, but I'll, I'll try to give an answer. That's pretty social. Thank you.
And hey, Steve. Like if, if my questions.
No.
I wasn't, I wasn't questioning your work. I wanted to say you're an utmost man of character. And a, a very great man. So I'm just, don't understand the stuff. Very well. And so I ask questions. It was not to insult anything you've done, because. I love you to death. So I apologize if I get across our way.
You didn't.
You're doing your job, Josh. Before we move on, any other, because you're given the next part too about the, the bond structure scenarios?
Um, yeah, I think we were just gonna see, uh, you know, really it's just to piggyback on the conversation from. The, the board, the board meeting. Was it the eighteenth?
Yes.
Uh, there's really no changes. Um. I know Tom and I had a discussion here in the last week a little bit about deferred interest. And. Really, these scenarios are built around option. A. Middle school only or option B, middle school and high school. And to stay at a dollar ninety-six uh per thousand. So with, with option A, uh, middle school only would be a twenty-three year term. And with option B, it would be a twenty-eight year term. So I guess just to make sure. I think there was gonna be maybe some further discussion about programming and then also then. Trying to set a. An estimate for an exit date on the middle school if the bond were not to pass. I think it was on the agenda. So, um. I could tell you the other thing that's happened since our meeting on the eighteenth is. Um, I've worked with Cassie Hibbert. From Wenahaw and Carol McCub from Hawkins. She's our bond legal counsel. And they are drafting up um our resolution for February twelfth. Which includes exhibit A, which will be just like we did in July, the language for uh, the, the program that is chosen. I guess one, one thing about. This language, since there's word limits to this, to these ballot languages, so this will be what would be filed on our S C L paperwork, which is due March first to Marion County. Since we're not doing projects at all the other schools and, and various types of projects, it does allow for more. Language surrounding details of the middle school like we discussed in the last meeting. Um, and it, it includes the high school, it would allow room, a little more room for that as well. So, so I think that provides a little bit more than the. That that helps us with what goes out, you know, in the ballot in terms of detail. So we're working on that. I do anticipate a, a pretty decent draft within the next few days and then we'll pass it along to. Scott and you, Jennifer and Aaron to look at and, um, and then maybe expand the audience for, for review, but uh, the goal will be to. To have. Something ready by the seventh, you know, for the board packet for the twelfth and. It's being written as if option B was selected and if it's not, then we just take off the high school part.
Alright.
Uh, so, but as far as the financing, you get back to that, are there any? Any questions on that? I think we reattached to board book tonight, the uh, the full presentation of Piper.
Well, thank you, Steve. And I wanted Steve just to update you on those bond pieces because it did come up at our regular board meeting this month and. Um, I know the board's gonna be making a tough decision, or big decision, I should say, February twelfth meeting. So last board meeting was dedicated to. Uh, for giving us guidance on option A or option B. I heard overwhelmingly it was option B, so we've managed to progress with, with that option in mind. Today is to talk about. Uh, the exit from Silverton Middle School. And so. All the information that I've given you in my updates last week. Uh, none of it should really be a surprise. What I try to do is lay out for you the types of things that are. Coming together around two thousand twenty-seven, which makes that. Um, a pretty attractive date, I think, to uh, to plan on. This plan, regardless of what we do, will take a long time. We're talking about uh. Relocating. Um, a large portion of our kids, um, and all the logistics and. Uh, everything that goes along with that. Uh, we also uh, wanna make sure we're taking great care. Uh, with our staff at the middle school to bring them along very carefully and so that there are no surprises here either. And so Brett, uh, she has already shared with the middle school staff, uh, the thinking that I put in our, uh, the board updates last week. Again, we want our middle school teachers to know every step of the way, what our intentions are. So the purposes of tonight, um, what I need from the board is to give me some direction on when it is that we're thinking about. Vacating the middle school. I told you in the, in the updates last week, we feel that June of two thousand twenty-seven is a good date to shoot for. Um, a lot of different thinking has gone into why we chose that date. I've listed the most compelling reasons for you. Plus. Jeff Alderman put together a list on the three most pressing issues of S M S and the costs that would go along with that. Uh, in, in the future. I think that's important for you to have also. The other thing is that we need to, so once we get that date, then we can start backwards mapping all the way to today. So if we know it's June twenty-seven, uh, if the board has a different idea, that's great. We just need something to go off of so we can begin to start planning. Um, for that to, to become a reality. The other thing is, and what I heard from the board loud and clearly is that we need to use this in our messaging. To our community. What's gonna happen with Silverton Middle School? Um, that's a vital piece also that we need to use. Uh, for going out for May bond as well. Um, so right here, uh, I have the compelling reasons we've put down. None of these reasons. Standing alone would be any reason why we shouldn't change the date. That's just our best thinking. Uh, maybe that could guide your discussion. We will be having a structural engineer go through uh, Silverton Middle School, I think in a couple of weeks. It's really hard to find these. These individuals and then schedule them and he will be submitting a report as well. To me, this isn't rocket science. If the board wanted to, we could stay in the middle school indefinitely. And just be band dating things. Granted, we don't have an earthquake or things like that. That'd be catastrophic. Um, but I think we all agree that that middle school isn't good enough. And that it is our district's most pressing need and has been for years. Um, and so uh. My goal, as with the previous bond, is to make sure you have enough information to make a confident. A decision as a board. Um, and so with that, Jennifer, I can, I can turn it over to you. At the end, what I would like. Is a motion that looks something like that. Okay, doesn't have to be June of two thousand twenty-seven. That's what we've come up with. We've given you our recommendation on that. Now, I'd like to, to hand it back to you, Jennifer, and if we could go from there.
Can you flip it back to there? Yeah. So, team, um, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to make, to make, to make the plan. Cause you never know what's gonna happen, but I guess I would also make sure there's enough flexibility to potentially, it's. Couple of years go by. Lord knows, you know, what happens. Could you say, let's, here's the plan. Let's just put it off two years. Something like that, but makes the plan for now, cause. You, you know. The facility is old, that there just could be. There could be that thing that just causes it to be completely done. You can barely keep it going for a few more years. So. So I, I think you have to have the plan as long as there's, that isn't. What we're definitely going to do. I mean, the, the, the plan is there. That can be executed, but it can also be put off if. The powers that be feel that we can't put it off.
Yeah.
And there's reasons compelling.
Absolutely.
Well, and any, any board can. Make their, their own plan.
Yes. What we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna, you know, the staff informs us kind of what's, what's going on, but, but. Yeah, it doesn't mean that, well, that's the way I see it, you know, make the plan. So you know what to do if you gotta bail. But same time, you know, now you go, you know what? We can keep it going for a couple more years and try for another bond or.
Contingencies would be a big part.
There you go. Thank you. Yep.
As, as it would with any.
I guess I'm. Need clarification of why a date is needed.
Um, most specifically because we need to start planning. And we'll have a lot of questions that come along on timelines and everything else. Uh, that will dictate what our work will look like.
I'm probably all wrong in my thinking here. But. If it's going to. Yes, uh, transitioning out. Will take X amount of time. But. Why does a date need to be picked? For that. Plan to be figured out. That's what I'm not clear on. Uh, I, I say, for example, that uh. I'm just, this is nothing. Comes from nowhere, then we just gotta have a number to work with. I say it takes us, uh, it figured out, it takes us eleven months to trans. To change up. Okay. Uh, why do we need a specific date of when that eleven months is going to kick off? Or be, need to be completed. In other words, why couldn't, uh, you know, the. The roof caves in tomorrow and if we have a plan, well, we gotta do up something for eleven months, but get us to eleven months. I'm probably not explaining myself.
I, I guess.
But I'm not clear on why an exact date of saying we're vacating. Needs to be part of making a plan. On what we'll do with that student model and staff.
Well, I would say first of all, that anytime we relocate students. We have to do that at the end of a school year, not in the middle.
Right.
Uh, secondly, we're talking about really complicated communication timelines as well. These are families, everybody will be impacted. Uh, by this decision. And we need the time to be able to set our communication timeline. So everybody's brought along. At the same pace and that we're doing that very systematically. Um, if we develop a plan that takes into account, we got from now until two thousand twenty-seven. That's gonna look a lot different in how we roll things out. If the board here decides they wanna be out of the middle school next year. Well, that's gonna uh, take a, a reprioritization of our district resources to do so. So this is extremely complicated. Kevin Palmer is here. Kevin and I will be working very closely together on the logistics piece. We're talking about all manner of services in. The school district of Silver Falls that will be, have to be adjusted to account for. The four hundred kids that go to different school communities.
I guess, yeah. And I guess it's, it's a.
And above all that, we have a district to run too. So, so this is a supplemental plan, plus all the day-to-day things we have going on. So I, I would say that June of two thousand twenty-seven is just enough time to really do this well. Um, and what we wanna do is get to the. To that school year of twenty-six, twenty-seven, haven't already done our lion's share of communication to our public. So that they have a lot of time to work through in their mind. How their family is gonna be affected and adjustments they need to make and. Just have a, a chance to, to process all the stress that that will cause as well.
I think to me, that's the number one reason is for families to be able to plan. Um, and we've talked about. Uh, transfer students, families who um, are gonna need to know if they have to make another, other arrangements.
And some of those things we won't know until we get into the plan. That's the other.
And, and, and a lot of it, I think, is staffing and resources inefficient. Well, you don't just move the kid to throw some teachers out there that they, they have to integrate work. Like, you know, workflow and. There, there's a lot to figure out, things that in the planning process that you'll expose pitfalls. If you just, if you just say, let, we're all moving, we're calling the mobiles and bringing them out, it would. It, it wouldn't end well. So it's, it's.
Where our thinking goes right now is we need to boil it down to three scenarios. Three scenarios that I can come back and begin sharing with the board, because one thing that I will want. Is we will take care of all the planning, but what I need from you is feedback.
Right.
How does that sound? How does that look? You know, do you have a suggestion here that might? Might work a little bit better. This will be a real team effort by the board superintendent team. And no matter what plan we come up with. No plan will be popular. That's really, really important that we accept that right now. And that's the reason why we need a lot of time. Uh, to work through uh, all the contingencies and to make sure that we're doing a really thoughtful job when we start talking about. Uh, upending our student's school experience.
I've got a couple of thoughts. Uh, so are Tom, I think we should start planning for it. But that's not, just because we're planning for it, doesn't mean it's automatic.
Right.
Uh. Then we move into that plan. Uh. You know, looking at the update of just some of the needs, you know, it's roughly like one point three million. Rough math, um, that's not in our budget. Um, but then also. Which is the lesser of like. Two horrible decisions that we might have to make, right? Do we? Try, try and tackle some of that where we don't have the budget, but then this massive ripple effect that's gonna affect. Um, every family in the district. Um, do we try and flip it along for another year or two and, but uh, principal's here tonight to kind of talk about that. So. Uh, yeah, I think we absolutely should start planning. But fully understanding that it's, it'll be a separate decision to implement that plan. Uh, and the other. Piece in our plan that we haven't really talked about is we're making sure we're getting public input at some point. Um, cause I think if, yes, the messaging.
Absolutely.
It's gotta be two-way, um. Because it can have such a significant impact. Um, throughout our entire school district.
And again, that will, that will take an enormous amount of resources to organize and to do it locally.
Then I'm sure part of that plan would be looking at like the capacity of how many kids.
Sure.
Uh, each school could.
There are portable classrooms that we need to move out. To K eight buildings. Or in-town elementarys, absolutely.
So to piggyback of, uh, 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 of what you said, Derek. This twen- June twenty twenty-seven, if that's what we choose. Um, that's really a working date, right? Because. It definitely could come sooner. Maybe it gets to that point and we're like, oh, we can do more, you know, uh, but this is a, a working date so that we have. A timeline, kind of like the budget discussion, it's the plan. It might not. It go exactly the way we're seeing it right this moment, but um, we've gotta start with something. Another, another thing that comes to my mind is that putting a date to it. Means that we're not kicking the problem down the road anymore. It's like making it. More real that this has to happen.
Well, I agree with everything that, that really. You guys said, the one, the one thing that I'm struggling with a little bit is that we've got. What I see as a major event happening when the S H S bond rotates off. And. I guess I would expect that a featured board is gonna, gonna try again. And so I'm just thinking about the timeline of that. First. And we don't know if that would pass or fail. But if they were to try again in, in May of two thousand twenty-seven. I suppose. And. And we're already planning for a June. Of twenty twenty-seven shutdown. I mean, I suppose the board at that point, or at some point prior to that makes a decision and says, hey, we're gonna hold off. And we're gonna push it to twenty twenty-nine or something like that and they. Cause obviously it'll take a couple of years to build a school. So I'm thinking out loud, I guess, a little bit, but. Yes.
Yeah.
If we pick a date of twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty, then it does have that same effect, like you said, kicking you down the road, cause now you've got such a long timeline. There's no urgency.
And we'd be making decisions where there will be a whole new board and, and you know, a different superintendent and all that too, which would make all this work. You know, kind of a moot point, uh, if it's out far into the future. If point on.
Well, I guess, um. Be patient with me, cause I have a lot, uh, thoughts. I, I don't have enough information to stick a date on this. I'm not comfortable with doing that. Just thinking about the kids. How much money would it cost to move the mods? To reset them up? How much cost would it change in transportation? Are we really saving money? Is the building really not safe? Like what studies are saying that that school's not safe? Now, gas got some security issues. I was just in there Friday. I was doing a sports, cause physical for a kid. Just transferred to our district. Probably can walk to school. Parents probably don't have a car. How much more time is he have to spend on a bus? What about the kids at the school that have friends? Ones at Avaquah Heights, maybe somebody lives out in Middletown. Which school are they gonna go to? I don't separate that. I I want I want nothing to do with that. Um so it's gonna come down to money. I don't have enough information on what do we do with the building? I don't have the the data to say I had make a concrete decision on, we need to close this school down. Um Eugene Field, there was plenty of health issues going on with people going through that building to warrant. Um not to mention, there's no parking, it's in a terrible location to have a school there. Gotta have public input on this, and I don't think it takes money, a lot of money to get public input. A plan, I'm okay with getting a plan. What would this look like? What schools would have to change? What schools would get mods? I think it's very prudent to do such a thing. This would be wise of us as a board to put that plan together. Decreased enrollment leads to further drop in money to our district would further decrease our general funds. People already think we spend our more money poorly already. This would just further that sentiment. Um why don't you maintain the building? It's just, it's like Eugene Field all over again. And I'm really frustrated that this is something pushed down to us. After twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we have asked this community time and time again to help us fix this problem. And I don't know how to fix their trust issues. It's just a really tough decision, so. I need more for me to make a decision to vote to say, yes, we're gonna sunset this building on this date. I need more information of how much it costs annually. To run that building. I know I've got these projects, but how much it costs annually? And if we can afford to keep it open, if we cannot afford to maintain that building in its state, then my hand will be forced. But if we can't afford it, I can't be like, um I think it'd be an unwise decision. To push those kids everywhere to decrease our enrollment.
Josh, can I ask a clarifying question? You said that um. I didn't, there was one thing that I didn't understand um about spending like. Perception of the public perception of of how we spend our money, how.
Further maintenance. They already think we don't maintain our buildings. They'll say, why don't you budget that? Because they don't understand. Most people don't want to do the research on their own and understand how school budgets work.
So you think that the uh that opinion could be that if that SMS has to close. The reason why is because the district didn't maintain it properly.
Correct. I hear it already.
If I can follow up with what Josh said, you're you're saying that like the, I keep going now, like the metrics or what are the decision points that are gonna? Push us one way or the other and and three come to mind like fiscally. At some point, there's a number out there, maybe we've reached it, maybe we haven't, that then triggers that, okay, fiscally, it's not irresponsible. The second one, it's structurally unsafe and triggers us, or there's a. Uh health related issue because of mold and asbestos or whatever that would then trigger us, I think. Making sure we're crystal clear on it, and there can be others, but those are the ones that kind of just came to mind that would then trigger, yes. Based on this information, we've identified those points and and.
I think there's three. And then and then. The tipping point where 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 is that? Because. That's why I get the thinking. It'd be nice to have a before a date is ever come up with to have a plan from standpoint of. Some plans are gonna be more expensive to implement than as far as taking care of the fiscal part. Uh there's gonna be. Some of the points you made, social health uh as far as uh staffing. You know, there's some scenarios I could contemplate where things are scattered. You you're taking away that that body of. Teachers as a school. Uh other scenarios, they'd still be together in some, whatever it may be. Uh those things have to be taken into consideration. Uh and and those uh. And the transportation, all that has pretty big dollars tied to it as far as uh doing some of these things and. And moving, so yeah, what is that tipping point of where, yeah, no one likes? It doesn't feel good. Putting fixing something that you know should be done with. Or will be done with hopefully real soon, but by the same token, you can't stop. Put them on the street. And so. You kind of summarized where I'm at. I have trouble with the date part of it because it's it's would be say that we're going to by. I don't care what the date is, by such a date, then the wheels are all in motion, no matter what.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think that's either.
So we just need something to shoot for. I think the more we know, the better we do, but we can't. We can't start to deepen our understanding until we know exactly what we're dealing with and what kind of timeline.
Right.
To start prioritizing the district's resources.
On on top of that, I'm Steve, I'm looking at an email that you forwarded from Carol McCoo, who you're working with on a for the the bond and. You know, one of the things that is. So correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, Steve, from what she sent, but you know, part of the issue is. As you know, when we get, once a bond has been or once a ballot measure, we have to be in fact. Present presentation information, and so we can't do if this then this without this board saying. This is the plan. And so we're we won't be in a position to even bring up a a potential closure. If this board doesn't say there will be a closure, you know. So I think, I mean, I'm looking at the language that she sent you here, Steve, that talks about. You know, board adopted plans in order for there to be a factual and impartial. Um decision made by the board. So that that can be part of the ballot language.
One of the things I heard loud and clear from the board ever since the November election is. We have to be able to show the public or at least inform the public as to what a no vote means. That's the reason why we really need, or one of the many reasons why we do need a date.
I agree with that because um that's part of the. The issue with the last. Bond um is that you could say what this a yes vote gets you. But we weren't able to say what a no vote gets you. And this is the only way we can say this is what a no vote gets you is um. A potential, you know. Upending of 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 our district and which is, I think. True, I think that you know, this is gonna happen at some point, and I think putting a a date on it. Uh makes it real, like, hey, we're headed towards this. And I also see that there's flexibility in case we need to do it sooner or we need to do it later. Um so. Anyway, I I think that that's a huge point that I'm in favor of.
Yeah, and I and I would to fills in Josh's concerns about. I agree with them all, and I think the best way to qual- to quantify those. Is to work, is to develop a plan, and then you can quantify all the disruptions. And the transportation and the cost issues, that that's a way to quantify how disruptive it would be. And then and then you can say this is the cost of the disruptions, this is. It's a big cost, or maybe, you know, it's a massive cost, let's. Throw some more Band-Aids on the old girl for another five years or something. We can, we can make a decision, but. By developing a plan, we can quantify the problems, I think, all the disruptions, I I think. That's the way I see it.
It will always be the board's call.
Yeah.
So. You know, I serve at the pleasure of the board, so. Uh but in order for me to put together. Three different scenarios for the board to consider, I I need to know that critical piece. If the board wants me to hold off and and not do that, that's. I'll do that too, but you know. But logistically speaking, um I cannot come back to the board with various scenarios about what things are gonna cost until. I have some really basic answers uh in terms of what we're looking at.
Yeah, what do you mean, basic answers? Can you specify?
Well, I need to know, I need I need to know uh how much time I have, first of all, the plan. Uh I need to know uh what the three scenarios would look like. Do we want to go with regions? Do we want to go with? Uh sending seventh and eighth getters to all our K eights? Do we want to send uh sixth graders? Uh classes to uh Mark Twain, Robert Frost. Uh when would that happen? What sort of things need to be in place for that to happen? Extra classrooms? By way of portables? Do we use the ones here? Do we not? I mean, there are a million different things that come up that. I I need to know how many, I need to know what our resources are, so that we have the capacity to even come up with.
So I'm I'm hearing that no matter what. Were there, we're not gonna try our best to maintain the building. We'll always try our best to maintain the building as long as we're there. We will never ever stop maintaining that facility to make it as safe as possible.
And this is, you know, you you mentioned, Josh, public input. Um I don't think we can run a public input process without. With no, but without without the June, without without a date. Because people would, uh it's not real enough, you know, like, how would you ask certain questions um?
I mean, they did it for Eugene Field. They had a whole committee full of teachers, community members. Right, only you're on that board.
I don't remember, they did it on the board right after I came on.
They had a whole group of people. I read all the minutes. I mean, I feel like it'd be a process, and out of that process, because of having that many teachers. In the building and community members who walk through it every day. They were the deciding factor to kind of push that through.
But that was yes or no, right?
Of what you what, yes, what to do with Eugene.
And we're in and that what Scott just mentioned is like having three options, like, is it gonna be by region? Is it gonna, I mean, I think there are more.
But what if all that committee decides in the public input is? Not where you, I mean, like, we would want to maintain this, but we have to find out how much it would cost to do that. Like, it's just financially not possible. Like, we cannot do this, guys, you know, we, you know, our enrollment's down, we don't have the money anymore. And then there's other options, like, how do we get our revenue back up? How do we increase our role? How do we get our revenue back? You know, those are other whole things that'll play into this that would help offset some of our maintenance issues or staffing stuff. I would hate to continue to have a hiring freeze. Cause it all is tying together, same pot of money and how we spend it. You know, like Steve said, you know, take three hundred thousand from this, well, that could have been three hundred thousand to a roof or plumbing. So. I don't, I'm not opposed to sunsetting. Um in the sense that of having a plan. But I don't, I don't feel like I've got the information to make a well-informed decision on a date. But I'm just one person, like, I'm not trying to sway anybody. I'm just telling you where I'm at.
Like, a little bit on affordability.
Yeah.
Um. So I think in the bond process, I think Steve, correct me if I'm wrong on this. So we we did the two and a half million to get the two wings. And the mods set, yeah, we think probably a little bit more than that, but officially. And then on average, a hundred thousand dollars a year. For contractor costs since then. Um I think is what we had figured out, and that doesn't, that doesn't account for. Just how much our maintenance guys are over there. I saw the. The document that I think you guys have that said the number of tickets, I guarantee you, it's quadruple that number. I was I was against that system when it first came because I didn't want our custodial guys sitting there on a computer. And spending forty five minutes putting in tickets when they could spend forty five minutes doing other stuff. But it's actually really handy. The amount of time they're over in our building is not reflective of that. It's way more than that. And so. So I think I think I'm, I don't know. I was hoping you'd be good on that, but I think it was an average of a hundred thousand dollars, but it was like a hundred fifty thousand dollars one year, less another year, two hundred thousand, you know.
I remember hearing that. I think that's right.
Yeah, to to patch roofs and different things. So my question to people sometimes has been, you know, when you build a building. Are you willing to not make that building better? But spend a hundred thousand dollars on it just to keep it? Like, we're not, we're not spending a hundred thousand dollars a year to make it better. We're spending a hundred thousand dollars a year to just stay in. Um. So that's just, I mean, and that isn't even a comment on the other stuff, it's just the affordability part is at what point. It's hard because I feel like it trickles, but that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the roof is then something that is not happening somewhere else.
Yeah.
And that's the hard part that just it just keeps going and going. Just after this last ice storm. Our whole kitchen, kitchen ceiling and the counseling office. Water coming in there and the guys spent days up on top of there just trying to patch it, talking to them, it's just, it's a temporary thing. And so there's dozens of hours um that they're doing that. So. Yeah, I think triggers is a good idea. It's sometimes hard when it's like, well, it's a hundred thousand dollars this year, too much or too little. And it's fifty thousand dollars next year, too much or too little, that's the hard part, but.
I think what people do is they weigh that against the seven million, you know, and that and that's where you can never. Cause I feel, I I have some of the same feelings Josh does, is unless you have a compelling reason. Um. That the community in a way has already said, well. You know, our. We've said that we want our buildings to reflect the love and respect that we have for our children, and in a way, I feel like our community's rejected that sadly. Um. And. Outside of a, and I think that we had the same issue when we were trying to, you know, uh. To close the uh. Eugene Field, and that issue went on for decades, uh sadly. Until there was, I think, a compelling reason that the community would support. My concern, I guess, is if the community doesn't support. Our decision, then whatever we decide is not gonna happen ultimately. Um. So I guess I I'm still conflicted about about it. I see the I see the need to make a plan, to have more concrete. Understanding of what we're, you know, what's gonna be required of us for sure. Um but I I I think it's gonna be very difficult to actually close that building until. We have very compelling, either, you know, like I said, money, health, safety. Um to to say that, you know, and again, maybe in twenty twenty seven, when the tax rates come down. The community will say, well, now we're willing to make an investment. Uh so that may change things up for that, but. Well, I'm hopeful we passed upon this time around, but um. I don't know, it's a tough decision for me.
I uh.
Oh, you're done?
Yeah. Uh. All this, as somebody mentioned it, everything's so intertwined, nothing's independent of it. And and the May bond. Plays a role in this, not solely from this point of. Uh having a date. Gives us an argument on the side of this is what would happen if it doesn't pass. But I've shared with a couple of you, th- th- this. I hold this date, this election extremely important under our circumstances. After November went down. And now this, and here's why. Cause as dear as I can figure, doing the math, when you start figuring uh any any. Anything that gets done in the way of a bond after this May is gonna create another assessment, if I'm hearing correctly. Uh it will more than likely trigger doing uh. Uh advisory committees again, and how that plays out and and the studies on it. And so you got all that, and then realistically, I think everybody probably figures. And the way that things are, that there probably wouldn't be much sense even trying at all if this doesn't happen in May. Until the other bonds coming on. So you put that. Then you've got your time lapse between, uh say it passes at that point down the road. Then you got your timeframe of of planning and selling the bonds and getting drawings and site and. That's a two-year process before you ever break ground practically. Two years to build. Realistically, if this bond does not pass this May. Two years to build. Realistically, if this bond does not pass this May. We're looking at the earliest possible time that kids and staff could be into a new building is two thousand and thirty-one. By the time you had all that in there. And so to me, this, this particular election, since it failed in November. Takes on a little more. Importance in the sense of it is, it is a big deal. And I concern is with the intertwinedness. And I don't know that anybody here has an answer for this. I know I don't. Will we alienate more? By having a target? Will that target date be the topic of discussion instead of passing the building? Or the need of the building and everything else? And will it detract and hurt us that way? And I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
I've got some additional thoughts kind of along those lines, and I think uh Scott kind of mentioned this before, I think. With the November bond, um, like folks have mentioned, people knew what they got if they voted for it, but not necessarily the impact if they didn't. Um, and I think we're wrestling with that again, kind of right now, just the gravity of like, are we really, really, really sure? That we would want to go down that road? And I'm, I'm, you and myself, like, walking that back a little bit. And so, um, because I don't think we've necessarily, everyone is comfortable with the triggering metrics, so. You know, let's say we do go for the bond in May. We work towards this plan, but I don't know if I'm. Now kind of reconsidering at a, at a. Spot where I would say, hey, voters, if this doesn't pass, we're immediately going into this plan. I think we're. Cautiously walking that back a little bit. Because we are now looking at. The decision of the title wave of an impact, like what? Again, what is the best worst decision trying to lift the middle school on for another year or two? Kind of blow up one of our entire district and then try to figure out the cost, because there will be substantial costs, obviously, and so. I guess my point would be, we still go out in May. We still have a plan, because we could have some catastrophic failure tomorrow where the whole building's flooded. We're going to need out a plan. Um, but maybe we as a board start figuring out what are the tipping metrics for us? Um, just as I hear the conversation, I don't think anybody is like, yeah, right now.
Yeah. Do we just? Say direct, you know, direct Scott to say make some plan, but don't put a date on it?
I don't know if that's helpful for him or not.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, because if, if, if we make a plan and put twenty-seven on it, but we also say, well, we can push that off. That's essentially saying it's open-ended, so.
Which would go back to Phil's point of despair.
I mean, I, I, I think it's very important to quantify what the social disruption, the cost, all of the details. Uh, what? The eventuality of closing the, the current middle school and its current situation, if we don't pass a bond in the future, but I, I mean. No idea. I have no idea how long we can.
There will be news articles, like, and they're going to want to know. Why the decision was made, and we're going to have to answer it. So the more metrics we have or the reasons other than. We have to say why, can't afford it. It's not safe. It's not sustainable. Okay, but we gotta actually have numbers to explain that. It depends. It's going to go in a paper in our town, and they've been very beneficial, but we have to give them specifics. And I don't have specifics.
Well, and chances are that, that, based on what you're describing. The things that you would need are not attainable before we have to make a decision on, on the bond.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the date. I mean, the plan, of course, it's very prudent to make a plan, what it looks like. You know, again, it'd be very wise to know which schools will get mods now. Like, that makes a lot of sense. We have five of them, right? What's five schools get mods? Which maybe they get multiple mods? What does transportation look like? Where you draw district boundaries for which kids go where, to which schools? I mean, we need to start, have to do that now. I mean, at least start it. Do we reconfigure the schools? Again. I mean, there's no reason for that, but to say if this bond doesn't pass, this will happen. Might cost us the bond. I don't know.
I, I worry about that. Would you make no sense?
Well, there are going to be people that make that argument loudly. Right? I mean, we. There are going to be people that are going to say that we're, we're fear-mongering, that this, you're going to get this if you don't. You know, look for a bond. Now, how much traction it gets? I don't know.
It's a, it's a perception we gotta concern ourselves with, because no matter what our intent is, perception's real.
Well, there just frankly is no way to know.
No, no, there's not.
But I look at it this way, we. There, there wasn't a reason. There was a multitude of reasons. The bond didn't go down. As many that down, we. We should address as many of those as we can. We can't address them all, but in trying to move the meter. And we can't throw up our arms and say, well, that's just the way they are. And so. I guess what I'm saying there is if. That whole fear-mongering thing is, you know, if it's got. If it's one of those main points, if we can eliminate that or at least not feed it.
So Scott, so you're saying you've already kind of done probably the math that you're saying. We can probably budget. To maintain that school, because I already looked, it costs about three hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain that building. Robert Frost is about, I think, right around two fifteen, Mark Twain's around two fifteen. They're the most expensive schools outside the high school to maintain in the district. So you're saying we've already kind of estimated that budget. Kind of looked at it like that's basically what we can afford essentially already.
I guess I'm confused what you're asking, Josh.
Well, because of the date of twenty twenty-seven, I'm saying in three years.
That was a list of priorities that Jeff Alderman and his team put together.
Yeah.
On, on likely things that will come up.
That we can't afford.
Well, I mean, depends on how you look at it. We can do whatever the board wants to do on this, but. You know, these, these things are extremely complex and. All planning starts with a date. Yep, because we cannot backwards map until that happens. And trust me, I'm, I'm not looking for more projects to take on. Our staff, our staff is already at the brink. And, and we're just trying to take the next three or so weeks to, to get on the ballot. Uh, coming up with a comprehensive plan and dealing with all the other things that are going on right now in the district is a monumental task. So, uh. I don't think, you know, I think we need to be really firm on, on what it is that you want as a board. Um, and if it doesn't get figured out tonight, but then you as a board are thinking about that. Um, because in my mind, what I'm always thinking about is how am I prioritizing the district's resources to best serve the kids here? And that's why I need direction from you. There are all manner of things I can focus the district's time and energy and resources on. But if you're not ready to make that decision, then, then you're not ready. I just, you know, come up with a plan haphazardly. I don't know how that would happen. Um, and, and Josh, it all starts with a date. I've got to be able to backwards map what it is that we need to do from that date. All the way to the present day today. Uh, because a, a plan ready for a year from now is going to look a heck of a lot different than a plan for June of twenty twenty-seven.
Would it be inappropriate to ask Steve or Dan their thoughts? Or this is?
I think this is their work.
I think this is, I mean, this is, this is, this is the district's recommendation. So.
Is there, is there any reasons, you know, like I've, I've stated that, I stated it, you know? Go for twenty twenty-seven and you can push it back or you can move it forward. I mean, is there, can you? Would it, if we said, how about June of twenty thirty and things transpire? Can you shift that, you know? Shift that forward?
Again, we can do anything the board wants to do.
Right, I mean.
Just keep in mind that, you know, we have finite resources here. So when we go to put our time and energy into something, knowing it's just going to be changed haphazardly along the way. Because of random information or whatever, that's a whole different thing than coming up with a plan plus contingency. And, and, you know, being as stretched as we already are with all the different things we have going on. I need something a little bit more concrete than just go develop the plan and, you know, if it changes, it changes. So if we're not ready right now, that's, that's a, that's a different topic.
What was the second place date? Or what were, what, how did this, how did the date conversation evolve?
You just ca- came up with this because it seems like the confluence of events tend to center around that date plus or minus. And again, uh, any one of these is not a reason not to go with June of twenty twenty-seven. It just seems like a reasonable time, so any shorter than that would cause undue stress. And would take more of a sense of urgency. Any longer, it's not real. This is just coming from what I've heard from the board overwhelmingly, that this middle school is the highest priority for the district. Again, if it's not, then, then we'll re, refocus and mention uh someplace else.
I, I guess I just, I mean, I'm. The idea of a date to create a plan, I guess, goes against like every city's rescue plan. Or FEMA plans that you have to have. It only comes into place once said emergency occurs.
Right.
So I don't understand why we have to have a date to develop. Plan once we hit certain emergency metrics. If that happens to be failure of the bond, okay. But. To say that cities and higher end organizations don't develop plans. Without a date in mind is, that's not exactly.
Well, I, I think the two are totally different, Josh. You're talking about a natural disaster or an emergency plan. Something like that that we already need to have. What we're talking about is a, is a thoughtful transition and relocation of a large student body. Uh, and that does require a date. We've, we've got all manner of things that factor into this, and it's an algebraic equation that is.
Even there, Scott, I, I struggle with, I don't see why a thoughtful, I, I, I give you. I give you this, it, it. Be totally impractical to uh. You know, something happens there tonight, you know?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have a plan, that's, you know, that emergency situation, that's different. But as far as looking forward. We can have a plan that is be the most thoughtful in how we would do it.
Yes.
But why is a date important to have that? Because we can have, just.
I would say if we want community input, so then what, what kids are going to be sixth graders in twenty, in twenty twenty-seven? Cause that's the group, I mean, it's not the kids that are there now, it's the, it's the, is it the third, I don't know, I'm just guessing. Is it third graders? Cause then we gotta start talking about the second graders' families and the first graders' families and the kindergarten families. And so if you want to having public input, you're going to have to go find out what groups of kids those are, so you can start having those. And so Josh, you'd asked the question about getting our input. To me, there's two questions before the board. Do you want this included in the bond? So that it can be part of the conversation in May? Or, and then the second question is how long is it okay for the kids to be in that learning environment?
Yep.
I mean, those are the only two questions in my mind. Um, because if you're, if you're actually okay with them being in that learning environment, then all of this is sort of irrelevant. Because if you don't put it in the bond, you still need to give us a guideline of how long is it okay for the kids to be in that learning environment? And from that point, we can, like Scott's talking about, we can start backward mapping.
So let's just go around with the six board members and um answer those two questions just right now as a. Uh, to see where we're at in the discussion. For me, it's past time for, to move kids out of that environment. Um, and for me, I do want it on the, on the ballot. So those are my two at this point in time. You could change my mind with compelling arguments, but I think Dan's argument.
I guess I'll go, um. I want to have a good set, a good solution, because I don't know what the learning environment that they would be moving into would be.
Exactly.
And that's. And the cost of that, and I, and I keep thinking that we would work that out, and we'd be going like, you know what, there. It's not right, but it's better than moving them, and we're better off just putting.
I assume that's why we're at right now.
Right, and I, that's. And then, and, and around and around and around we go, and I'm doing it myself, so I don't know really.
That's why the date's important, I think.
Correct, because, because it makes it real. Scott's right, it makes it real. Because then we'll get input. And so I, I'm.
Yeah, because you won't get any real input unless people figure out how it's going to affect them.
I mean, I'm not hearing, I, it's, it's a. Definitely not a, the proper learning environment. But is it unsafe, is it dire? And like I said, when I, when I compare it to moving all the kids around, the learning environment of that is like, is that any better?
It's not good.
And I don't think it, I'm like, I don't. My gut tells me it isn't, especially the cost associated with that. I'm like. We got three weeks?
It's just a matter of if, if the board wants to use that as part of the messaging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that would be the only reason for that.
Well, I appreciate uh Dan had brought up the December nineteenth email that Carol sent me back. I think it was based on a call that I. Made to her and she wasn't available, and I had forgotten about it, but. Um, Dan referenced it here a little bit ago, but yeah, I, I, I don't know that we have everything we would need. You know, put together. To include anything within the ballot language. She just said that we would have room within the explanatory statement. That would be a little more generic, like you're talking about, like something like, it must, must be impartial, simple and understandable, but it could just be something like. Um, to the effect in the explanatory statement, if the middle school isn't replaced, the district must consider certain options as. A, sending kids to certain buildings, B, X, Y, Z option, et cetera. Um, but based on her answer, doesn't, you know, bond legal counsel, I'm not sure. We would have really what we need to include it on. Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Taking on that too. And until Dan brought that up, I, I had forgotten about this response, so. I guess to answer your question, Jennifer, I mean. You know, I never want to create division or I want to upset anybody, so if I've done that, I apologize. I'm just trying my best. Do I think kids should be in that building? No. We've been trying to solve this problem since two thousand and eight. And it just keeps getting pushed down the road, so I have a lot of frustration on the community. I'm sure they have frustrations with us, so I'll take it. But Tom brings up a really good point. Is what we're going to put the kids through any better than what they're going through now? I don't know. The kids that are already going to that school are going to experience a significant different experience, transportation-wise, proximity-wise to the school. And some of those other schools, I mean, that's why we're trying to pass a bond to fix their issues. They're not exactly in great condition either. So. Um, do what I wanted. I am absolutely okay with putting some type of generic language in there, like, we will be forced to have to address. These issues and come up with alternatives. Immediately coming up with something of, of this does not.
Because it's not sustainable.
It may, it just simply may not be financially sustainable. I don't know how to draft language like that, but. I just think about the kids, man, just.
You know, could you say? Lengthen the timeline, and I, I don't know how the language would look, but. Have a book, a plan to potentially move the kids, close it by twenty thirty. You know, have extended date, have some wiggle room in there a little bit in the language.
If you're gonna say potentially, you could just say potentially June twenty twenty seven.
Sure, whatever. But I'm also giving it some more date just to not seem quite so threatening, but to also make people think that this is. At some point in the not too distant future, this is gonna be a very real, real thing that's gonna happen if we don't pass a bond to build it. It's gonna be very, it will be real.
Well, we could decide that we're gonna form a committee to, to investigate, evaluate and burn a recommendation plans. Plans to. It's a great, you know, close, something to that fact.
But i- is that enough to, for people to see the downhill effects downstream?
Not nearly as direct, no. No.
Cause that, to me, that's the issue is the, the, the truth in advertising, that this is what a yes vote gets you, this is what a no vote could very well get you.
And then it gets back to what I commented earlier, do we lose or gain?
But, but if it, but it's an honesty thing. I'm not looking at it from a vote perspective necessarily. It's an honesty, like this is all of it.
But is it honest if we're saying? June of twenty seven and then we're hedging our bet by saying that we can move that if we want.
Yeah, I think it is honest because it's at least making it real, which is important for people to understand.
To answer your question that you asked. Uh, we should have been out of there yesterday. And, but as has been mentioned. It's hard to quantify it because if without a new building. Where they're, where they're at now, how's that compared to what the plan B would be? About going to plan B. Uh, that, that's a tough part. So I. I guess I vote on the side of, I would say on the side of not having the language in there. Even I feel very strongly, we need a new middle school. That's why I feel very. Deeply about we should be doing everything we can to make it, and I'm not sure putting a date there is the right way to go.
Yeah, I feel like it's past time to be out of a middle school as well. Um. I would, I would. I would like to put a date on the ballot, but I'm still leaning against it. Um, this conversation's been very helpful. It's very, one of the most difficult conversations we've had as a board. Um. And I, I've got a lot of conflict, you know, eternally about, about that, but I'm, I'm still. I guess leaning against it for all the reasons that would, you know, everybody else has too. So it's one of those things that there was a. There was a clear answer. I think we've overcome to it by now.
Steve, Dan, maybe you can answer this word. Scott, how tight does that language have to be in the ballot? Can we put something on there that? You know, if the ballot were to fail, board options could include any of the following, an exit strategy from Sorrento Middle School. A reevaluation of how long we can maintain it for fiscal, structural health and safety reasons. A little bit more general, so then we're not.
We can draft that out, we could.
softer, doesn't get the hard like exit.
I like exit strategy.
Cause where I'm at right now is, I'm almost thinking we divorce this, um. This hard deadline right now, uh, and put something a little bit softer because I don't think. If we're to fail, I don't think we're gonna be like next board meeting, we're out of the middle school. Um, I think we're all having like weighing the consequences of that and. Wanting more information and being able to go to our community and say, this is why we're moving, this is why we're closing it. Um, but it does give me something tangible like. We're not exactly sure. We think these are the possibility as far as options, full disclosure, um. And then put it to the voters and that, again, that would give them something kind of like, okay, these are decisions and not necessarily that that's enough to. Sway people, but it does get into that honesty piece of like, this is what we're looking at. It's not our deadline. Um, and I think it's true to what we would actually be doing if the bottom were to fail.
So Derek, I think, um, I, I'm sure that. We could, could include in language like that. I'm not, not, not the expert, but we are literally. Cassie worked up some language last Friday just around the project details that would be in the ballot right now, the details of the middle school, like we talked in the last meeting. Now it's, Carol was, was out in the last week and now tomorrow she's picking up from the legal side. This, uh, draft and getting her legal piece around it. So I need to. Give her a call in the morning and say, you know, we had a work, work session last night, kind of coming back to the, the topic I asked you about in December. And this is what the board's thinking and see how we can get it included legally, you know, in the language on the more. On that type of basis with that, without a date. Well, it kind of.
I mean.
Seems like that's.
Yeah, uh, uh, to me, what you said, it sounds like a good summary of what everybody is thinking.
Just see what that is and then, you know, get her response and then see how she might be able to work something like that for. You know, only a few of us could. Could review it, obviously three, you know, three board members and then we could, you know, bring it out as a draft resolution for the February, uh. Board meeting, get it out by the seventh, I think, and I'll double check with Carol on this too. We may be able to just roll it out for robust discussion at the February twelfth meeting and not adopt until the twenty sixth. If there's enough substantive change needed, that may need some legal, more legal opinion. Because it's, it's basically just comes down, we have to have this done so that the SEL can be submitted to the county by March first.
So everybody good with what Steve's saying?
Yes, I, I like that. I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the same reason.
Unless I find out something different from Carol tomorrow and I'll communicate that immediately. That, hey, no, you really should get it adopted on the twelfth, then we could, maybe by the twenty sixth, so we could have more discussion on. What we think's a really good draft, but for discussion by the entire body.
Thanks for thinking that through for us, Steve. That's great.
I want to make sure that I want to be known that my comments that I, I really respect you, Scott, and, and everybody's work. It's something I've just really been struggling with, so just want to say thank you for everybody's.
Well, keep in mind, this is just the district's stance on it. So, so. You know, we shared that thinking and that's absolutely what I'm hearing is we need to back off of that, which is great because. What's helpful to me is to have some direction from the board on how to prioritize resources going forward. So, so this is good.
And I would add, you know, you say you want, you want to put a date on it to make it real. And, but you putting that date up on there in orange and bright, it made it very real for the six of us.
Yeah.
We, we just had a very real discussion.
Keep in mind also that this was all developed from previous discussions the board's had.
Right.
So, yeah, so, and those are always subject to change. So, so I think it's, I think we're in a good spot.
I also want to circle back with two things, Josh. I don't think you should ever apologize for thinking that you're being divisive because you're not. It, we, we needed to have a really good discussion on that. So I, I don't, I don't want you to apologize. Um, I do apologize to Brett for having to be here for so long, but, um. I wanted to give you a chance to say anything you wanted to say about this discussion, um, because I think we probably really. All respect your opinion. And then secondly, um. This is not on the agenda necessarily, but we've been talking about the gym space. And, um, the PE and the potential PE impact of having an auxiliary gym. And so I don't know if you're prepared tonight, but since you're here, like if, if it cuts off, but, and you know, like, so you don't have to come back another time and tell us about that.
This is great.
Anytime. Um. I just piggyback on what Tom said right there with that date, um, having an impact on you guys. I struggle with the same thing. I've had conversations with lots of you guys about. In this community, I think if you put a date on something, it can be perceived as a threat. Um, that we're gonna close this unless you pass this, you know, and we don't want to come across as that. But on the other side too, I worry that. Kind of like we were talking about Jennifer. People aren't gonna have that conversation and aren't gonna feel that unless there is something and maybe it doesn't have to be a date. But, but I think it has got to be something because honestly, thinking about May. If it's, if it's just the middle school on the ballot and nothing else has changed, is that gonna swing ten percent of the vote? And so. I, so I, I just, I would, I would ask to, to think that through because I think. If, if that's all that's there without some discussion like you're having right now, which is good. Then people are gonna say it's just status quo, no big deal. Um, I thought a lot about the dates too, and when I talked to Scott about it. Where if it's too far, and if you're getting to the two thirties, I mean, and I'm thinking, okay, how many more years do I have to retire? That's pretty far for anybody. We have, we, you know. It's just a long ways away and people go, well, something else will come up between now and then. But then as a building principal, thinking about something too close freaks me out. I mean, something would happen. You tell me next year, that's, that's twenty four hours a day for the next, you know, while figuring stuff out. So it's that. Happy medium on making a plan, whether, whether it's a date or not, that I think is really important. Um, because something, something has to be, a, a sense of urgency has to be out there. And, and I'm always in a weird spot when I sit, when people ask me about the safety, you talk about the safety of the middle school and all of that. And to say, I want it to be safe enough and welcoming enough where everybody feels good about sending their kids there, uh, tomorrow. Um, but that to still say we're not really content with being here and, and. And I would urge anyone who questions that, take all your history away with that building, pretend like you haven't lived here your whole life. And then just walk around and ask yourself, would anyone design a school like this ever, anywhere? And it be okay? And, and the answer is just objectively, no. Um, it's no. Um, and so metrics are good, and I think, I think setting up metrics are important. I would also caution that we don't want to give off the impression that we're gonna just wait till it's really, really, really bad. Instead of, you know, you know, the metrics have to be good enough to say we're getting out before it gets really, really, really bad. Um, anyway, so there's just a couple of random things, but I appreciate the discussion and it's a weird discussion to have with my staff. I had it last week. To say that we're gonna talk about openly, um. The possible closing of the building that you currently work in, which is weird. Uh, but I promised them when I got here seven years ago that they would not be surprised. Like the Mark Twain staff felt when they got moved out of Mark Twain. And so I just tell them everything. I didn't tell them this was for sure. I just said the board's gonna be having this discussion. Who, I just want to let you know. So, um, none of it comes as a surprise. Um, in terms of the auxiliary gym, I. So as a, just a daily thing with PE, I run three PE classes, so, um, we can have anywhere from a hundred and a hundred and twenty kids. In the, the main gym, which is the lower main gym and then the upper mezzanine, which is not a full gym, it's smaller. It's the ceiling shorter, there's baseball, um, batting cage wires that go on the top. And so I wouldn't even count that as a auxiliary gym necessarily, but it's, I put in a curtain, so you have three spaces. For a hundred and twenty middle school kids to have PE at the same time, every period of day. And then when it rains, which is most of the time, um, I have to have two PE teachers have a prep at the same time and then PE happening. And then two hundred plus middle school kids having lunch recess crammed into half of that space also.
Oh, it's only half.
What's that?
Only half.
Yeah, pull the curtain down and, and have them in there. So I try to spread them out and open the library and all that kind of stuff, but we just don't have big spaces that, I mean, that's pretty much it. So just that, I mean, an auxiliary gym would help a bunch in terms of you want middle school's kids spread out. And not in roving bands of, you know, two hundred. That's not the best thing for them. Um, PE, we were walking through with actually a bunch of district office people. And you, it's our main hallway. And so when you go through the main gym. Um, there's various games going on and we've had multiple staff members hit with volleyballs. Sometimes they're playing floor hockey and so pucks are flying by and they're dodgeball and all sorts of stuff happening. And so. Staff members and people just walking through our main hallway all the time are just watching for PE stuff going on because, um, that's where it's happening. Um, and then just, um, sports, even just for our school. We, we only do seventh and eighth grade, uh, basketball and volleyball because we don't have space. Um. And if we had auxiliary gym, we probably could add sixth graders and, and go over there. And then. I think a big thing for the community is we, and I think Colin mentioned this in the last board meeting. Um, so many of our kids that we've coached and been on teams. We just go back to back to back to back until late at night, every night with. Fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh graders getting done with practice at nine thirty at night because we have no gym space in this town. Um, and so. And now again, if you were telling me if you take the auxiliary gym off, the bond would pass. I would say, okay, I might be willing to make that deal, but I don't, I, I don't believe that that actually would make that much of a difference. Um, and where I think a bunch of the community people would love having another space. Um, for, for sports, events and everything else. And so, and even for me, I mean, thinking of, uh. Drama productions or band productions that we have to set up in the middle of the day and we have to cancel PE classes because that's all happening there and. And just meetings at night and, um, and it, it just, it would be really helpful to have another gym. Um. Anyway.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I, I was in my, my kid, he's a seventh grader at, at, um, SMS and. He says that when it's cold or weather's bad, they do have to go to the gym and it's really noisy and crowded. So that's, uh, that's Quinn's input. Just wanted to. Make sure that got in there. Yep. All right. Well, I think we're at the end of the agenda. Um, I, I wanted to also say that I really appreciate being able to meet face to face. Um, so thank you staff for setting it up this way. I think it's a hit, um, in terms of being able to see each other's faces. Um, without objection, being adjourned.
Thank you all.